And my apologies to everyone who has been waiting very patiently that we are behind. We were supposed to begin our hearing for HB 707 at two o'clock. It is now 2:45. So I hope we can make up some time on this. I am going to open the hearing for HB 707. And let's see, who is the... Yes?
Representative Potenza is presenting another bill in another committee at the moment. And she's the prime sponsor.
Okay.
I'm happy to introduce the bill for the purposes of
Okay.
beginning discussion.
Okay.
And then if you'll clarify the rule for me, am I allowed to return to the committee if I just introduce?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
As far as I understand, you may. If you are introducing a bill on behalf of someone else, you may come back to your chair and be, you know, question testifiers. And if Representative Potenza returns, we can give her a chance also to talk.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we'll wait a moment, have Representative Germana present the bill to us. I'm sorry, Representative Germana. Hold on one moment.
Sure.
Okay. Are we all set here? Okay. Representative Germana.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Nick Germana. I represent Cheshire 15, which is Hinsdale, Chesterfield, Keene, Wards 1 and 3 through 5, Surrey, Walpole, and Westmoreland. And so I'll just very quickly introduce the bill. I would point out to the committee something. Oh, Representative Potenza is here.
Representative Potenza is here. We would love you to introduce your bill to us. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Representative Kelly Potenza, Strafford, District 19, Rochester Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. Sorry, I had to present other bills and I filed too many bills this year.
Been there, done that. We all know. Thank you so much.
So I'm not sure what... Did you say anything?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, so the reason why this bill came forward is really due to being part of this rules process for, you know, in a sense, over a year. And then, of course, I was on the subcommittee here for rules as well. And so we lived and breathed these rules during that whole time. And so I was able to see things firsthand. And so that's also the reason why we have so many different cosponsors on this as well. And then what happened through Gelcar and when they first denied the rules and then they realized that, or they felt that they realized that it was, that they were making more of a policy decision and that that's the legislature's role, we decided to put these into policy. So basically, right now, we have, from one criteria alone, the weakest rules in the world. They're produced under a statute that literally says, "Just go ahead and write the rules." This bill exactly is what we need. It's the guardrails, really. So it improves a set of, improves a set of rules that basically DES doesn't even have to work on for these little items that I've put in here because the legislature did all the work to get to where we are today through hundreds of hours of testimony, experts, research, talking to other states, all of that. So in the bill, at the end of the bill, it's one of the most important parts of the bill. It's from lines on page 3 from 31 to 36. And it's basically changing an introductory paragraph. And it says, "The commissioner shall have the responsibility and authority to adopt rules under RSA 541A that are necessary to protect the public health and the environment with an ample margin of safety relative to this chapter." So those 10 words, basically, that modification, makes it clear that their job, really, is to protect the environment, not to just write the rules. So I just want everybody to remember, because I wasn't here at that point, in 22, 2022, the House and the Senate passed site-specific setback rules. It was, it was, the bill was 1454. I think it was Representative Matt Simon put it forward. But it was vetoed by the governor. And then we almost got it overridden. We were able to get it overridden in one chamber. So, but DES already knew, in a sense, what the legislature's intent was. And this completely, these new rules have completely missed the mark, I would say, tenfold. DES was also told a very long time ago that solid waste permitting should be site-specific. And moreover, it's where the legislative intent is. The bills that have been filed over the last five to six years clearly state what the legislature has been trying to do. So the March 2024 draft rules, they were already the weakest in the world. It allowed pollution to move at three feet per day, whereas most states and countries restricted to a couple of feet per year. But then, long after public comments ended, DES added actually one piece of this. It was a gravely dangerous sentence to the rules, which eliminates even that weakest world, weakest in the world test and allows a landfill to be built anywhere in the state as long as there's 24 inches of imported dirt under it. That sentence explicitly allows the dirt to transmit pollution at three inches per day, which of course is eight days to go through 24 inches of soil. So, like I said, the bill already has 14 cosponsors, seven from each party, including three from the Senate. We all agree with, we all agree with Gelcar that the rules are contrary to public interest and contrary to statute. So this bill simply picks up the ball and changes the rules and changes the statute, but in a small and fundamental way. I wanted to, I know it's been talked about a lot when we talk about solid waste. The governor has strongly signaled her opposition to the Dalton Project. You know, and that situation is basically, you know, more grim now for that project than it was even a month ago. But the rules, and this is the most important thing, it's not about one project. Right now, the rules will allow a landfill to be put pretty much anywhere. So if the rules are not rewritten, rewritten, some company could come in, could come to Nashua, could come to Keene, Concord, wherever, and find another terrible tract of land and claim that the rules entitled them to build there. So basically, the rewritten rules absolutely do not make it impossible or even hard to cite a landfill in a decent location. One thing we know for sure is that the current rules are the most permissive in the world and do not exempt virtually any tract. It should be hard to cite a landfill. And you may hear testimony later this afternoon from people who want it to be so easy so that no thought needs to be put into the location. Those people are gambling with every resident in this state. And one that wrote opposing testimony that we all received is a paid contractor for the industry that is working on the only permit that is in DES's office at this point. I want to make it clear that I've had some conversations with the industry about my bill. And there has to be some changes. There's a couple places in here where I was, I'd say that I got a little aggressive. And those are up for some changes. One was at the 10-mile radius in here. And another was, the Ford Act is already law, so that's not really an issue. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the bill, but we wanted it listed in the rules since it's already federal law in regards with permitting around, of course, airports and such. And then, of course, with violations, that can be changed as well to maybe say repeated violations, you know, bad actors, repeat offenders. But I also do want to say that already, an automatic deny of a landfill that is of a permit application is if the, if the person putting in the permit, the company, has broken the law in the sense of where they're being sued currently. So if there's an active lawsuit, you're not allowed to put in a permit. So we're already protected by that. So because of that reason, it makes me feel better in regards with the violation pieces that I have here in this bill. And on that note, I think I've covered everything.
Okay. Do you have a pink slip that you filled out for your testimony?
No, but I'll break up.
And I want to thank you for your work on this very important bill.
Thank you.
I don't know, any other questions? Representative Bixby?
Yeah, I think this might be covered under what you, one of the things you mentioned needs to be reworked a little bit. But on page 3, line 18, "No permit for the operation of solid waste landfill shall be issued in New Hampshire for any applicant who has been found in violation of any federal, state, or local environmental laws, regulations, or permit conditions anywhere in the United States." And so...
That is all going to be reworked.
That's, so you're going to rework that so that if it's a permit, if it's a violation that has been brought to the attention of the landfill operator and they are working on remediating it, that that is not a problem?
Correct. Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Representative Gruber?
Whoops. Thank you for what seems like a very important bill. There's a, I think this might just have been oversight, but in the distance for the setback, initially you refer to portable water supply, perennial rivers, lake, or coastal water. But later, I guess that's on line 24, page 1, we don't have portable water aquifer there. So you may want to check, make sure we're consistent with where you're measuring from. So on line 24, page 1, potable water aquifer is not listed.
What pages that?
Page 1, line 24.
Page 1, line 24.
Okay.
So just make certain that we know we're measuring from the same points at all. And that's, also you have that on page, page 2, line 8, same thing. Insert the potable water aquifer if that's intentional location.
Perfect. Thank you.
Otherwise, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, I'd also like to bring up, it was an oversight by OLS, and let me find the mistake. So I've already put in an amendment to, it's literally one word. So on page 3, line 8, and this is, this basically, this hydraulic conductivity, this is, this is the meat of this bill. This is one, this is the most important thing, what I was talking about, which makes us the weakest in the world. It's supposed to say, "No amount of imported soil can overcome, not come." So there was a, can come such deficiency. So I didn't send it to her wrong, so it was, it wasn't mine. So OLS doesn't usually do copy and paste. They, they're very good about retyping. So that's where, but that's already been fixed, not including the other things that we have to work on.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee? I, Representative Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, the boondocks over here. I'll try to...
Yeah.
My hand. Yes, exactly. A Wheeler flag. Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Potenza, would you believe, I know that you brought this up in your testimony a little bit, but I had spoken to somebody who was on Gelcar who voted against those rules because they had spoken to somebody from the Environmental Protection Agency who told them that these rules were essentially a joke. Would you believe that, that the EPA views our environmental rules as a joke?
I would believe that. That is why we are, that's why we have other states that are basically banning landfills because they're bringing in, you know, 50% of their waste into New Hampshire. So this is the kind of stuff that we have to look at. Landfills are, they're a necessity. I get it. But they should be the last thing that we're looked at. And we're not looking at any other things. And I forget, when I first started with the committee, there was a wonderful recycling presentation. And I think New Hampshire was like in the bottom barrel of that. Like we were like the worst in the 49th ranking of, in regards with recycling and doing all of that. It's taken us a long time to get where we are right now. But a lot of people are awake. They're, they're really looking at this. The real New Hampshire advantage is to have clean drinking water and wonderful clean spaces. We have nothing if we don't have that.
Representative Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Representative. So could you explain a little bit more what you mean when you refer to a site-specific criteria? That obviously has been a phrase we use a lot. It's kind of a bone of contention. But if you could speak to how this bill is intended to provide site-specific criteria?
I turned off my mic. Yes, so one specifically, if you're talking about, you know, on page 3, lines 4 through 9, that right there is very site-specific. There's a lot of other things in here that talk about, you know, certain setbacks and stuff like that. But, you know, the setback from any perennial river, lake, water shall not, it's all about distance of travel. So it's not giving a number. So Representative Simon and I used to talk about this all the time. You know, we can't just pick some arbitrary number because, of course, soil and, and, and and basically, you know, if we're not digging down with the bedrock and all of that kind of stuff is different wherever you go. I'll never forget in, when they dug the well at our first house in New Hampshire that I owned in Concord, you know, the neighbor didn't have good water flow, but we did. And we were literally like right next to each other. So all of the stuff in here is all based upon time of travel and basically looking at what that site is. You know, what kind of soil it is. Is it in a gravel pit? Is it in a sand pit? Does it have clay? All of that kind of stuff is taken into all of these different criteria that are put in here. So everything's looked at individually. We don't just say, "Oh, 500 foot setback, that's it. That's good enough." No, you get to look at everything around it, so.
Follow it.
Thank you. And also, as I look at it, page 1, line 29, starting there, that's 17, section 1. And isn't this also where the, the work of the hydrologist comes in to perform a comprehensive evaluation of the specific site to decide what that five-year setback distance means in terms of space?
Yes, very important. 16 through 22. Yes, very, very important.
Thank you.
Representative Howard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember in last session, I guess my question is, is this meant to displace the rules that were put in place in between the time in the last session when we tried to be almost as, you know, as prescriptive as rules would be? And they, there was sort of a promise made to us that we didn't need to legislate it because the rules were going to be comprehensive and updated and all of that. And, and this seems like another attempt to help them, you know, make law, make rules that are, that are, that are site-specific and advanced into the science of today rather than what we, what we found in the old rules before we did it in last session. And I'm just wondering, are we going to get the same pushback about rules versus legislation that we got last time?
Well, I'm hoping not because I think as we learned from, from Gelcar, that we're supposed to be the policy drivers. And this is really driving that. There's gaps. There's a lot of great things in the new rules. But the most critical things are, are missing and, and missing by a mile. And this puts them in. And I mean, the rules are, they're, you know, it's a very, very long document. So it's, it's really an 800 rule, but there's multiple things that, you know, it's, they call it one rule, but it's all these different things that are in it. So this changes those things, which is really important. But during the whole process, the process was completely broken. And from the beginning, the Waste Management Council had no representation of, for the public or public health. There's, you know, and basically you had a one person on there that was helping write the permit for the only permit that DES has that was, you know, in that room and saying, "Oh, that they're not weak enough." Four times the rules changed. Four times they were weakened. That's a ton. And that wasn't from the public testimony that was going on. There were a lot of private meetings that were happening that were, that industry is pushing back on DES to make them weaker. We know that for fact. We have the 91A documents. So we just, we've got to be, the legislature needs to be in the driver's seat on this. There's been boatloads of expert testimony. I've been, I mean, from talking to people in Maine and Pennsylvania. And then we have wonderful people here that have lived and breathed this that I can't even imagine the amount of time that they spent on all of these things unpaid. And in public testimony, every bit of the public testimony that has ever come in through DES was all against it. Every single thing. The documents that we put together, Representative Germana could speak to this as well. Pose me a question. We, we gave this whole long document and said, "Why, why, why? Why can't you do this, this, and this?" And not one of those things ever got put into the rules. So we had a wonderful hydrogeologist that came and presented to us and gave us this chart. If this committee wants all of the data, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to bury you with the book of it. I will. I mean, it's hard. You don't know what you don't know. But when you live and breathe this, oh my gosh, it's glaring. And we've got to make the changes. And the time is now.
Okay. Any other questions? I only have one question insofar as, you know, I've, I've heard talk about the 1 by 10 to the minus five centimeters per second, whatever, that... Is that threshold, that stringent threshold necessary based on the fact that we require in New Hampshire two liners for a landfill where other states do not require two liners?
Good question. I'm not familiar with liner requirements around other, other states. I do believe that that has, someone has gone and looked at that. I know that the main landfill, I believe that they require two liners. We just looked into that one. They're a public-private landfill. So it's still, liners fail. There's nothing that can stop it. They're going to leak eventually. And if there's two, great. It won't leak as soon. As we know from documents that we have from supplied by DES, there was a puncture in the NCS, NCES landfill in Bethlehem, I think about 10 years ago. That's the reason why, probably why that's leaking. And, you know, there's really not been a lot of anything done about that. So we've got issues here. People make mistakes. It's, it's going to happen. So you have to make sure that wherever you're putting it, and it's not stringent. I will give you, if you don't have that document, it was a document that we received on the Rules Subcommittee. Representative Germana, remember all the other states in their numbers? We are still, if we're at 10 to the negative 5, we are still fairly weaker than, I don't know, I would say about 90% of the other states. Like you've got South Carolina and others. They're 10 to the negative 7, 10 to the negative 6. So if there was wiggle room in there, especially since I've talked with another landfill operator that is, you know, possibly looking to expand, if that number, that 10 to the negative 5, was going to hurt them for their expansion, there's, there's room to, to talk about that and bringing it down to the negative 4. But to the negative 3 and then basically round it up is insanity.
And, and my other question is with regard to this travel time or this, you know, to the negative 5, What percentage of land within, within New Hampshire would be either an okay place to put a landfill versus not an okay place to put in a landfill? Do, do you have any kind of percentage of, you know, would we be able to build a landfill based on these numbers?
We would. And I don't have that at the top of my fingertips right now. But there was testimony that we got in that showed, I don't know if you remember this, that showed, there was a map and that showed other areas where you could cite a landfill in the state. So, and we would only want, like I said before in testimony on multiple bills, you know, we could maybe only have to have one more, one more landfill in the next 100 years. And that's a good thing. So there is, there is space.
All right. Representative Bixby and then Germana?
Would you believe that the approximate indication of that map of soils that are appropriate for a landfill was about 83% of the land area of the state?
No, I didn't know that, but thank you.
I'm not going to, it's been a couple years, so if, if that's not absolutely the right number, I, I won't, you know, I'm not going to guarantee that exact number, but that was approximately what I remember from a couple years ago.
Representative Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pardon me. Trying to figure out how to phrase the question, pardon me. With the, some of the opponents of, of this particular number, which has been around for a while, right, have, have made the argument that there wouldn't be enough land available in the state. When they have been asked, have representatives of industry ever provided any statistical evidence to support the claim that they would not be able to cite a landfill in this state without requirements?
No.
Thank you.
Representative Howard?
When you talk about this 10 to the negative 5 requirement, if you, if you put that same equation next to a body of water, is that, is that, you know, it used to be 200 feet, maybe now it's 500 feet or something, would you, would you still, would, would, would you, would that override the, the math? Or the, or what would be more important, the water or would it make it to the water?
Yeah, there's, it, it all kind of works out. So if you, and on page 2 it discusses, it discusses distance of travel estimate. So they would all kind of match up. So basically, there, there is, I mean, there is a certain amount that you'd have to be further away than that. And because it depends. I mean, it really depends on what you're talking about here. So if it's like in a wonderful location with clay and all of that, and then it still meets up with the five-year distance time of travel, it's, it's, it's basically, they both are complementing each other. They would both be the same. Because the time of travel from the site with 10 to the negative 5 is the same as like the five-year distance. So they're both kind of like parallel to each other or complementary, if that's a better word.
Okay. Any other questions? Representative Comtoa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Representative, for being here and presenting this. Just a quick question for you because you've been talking about other states and everything. Would you say New Hampshire's geography is comparable to all the other states?
Actually, we had someone that testified on that, a hydrogeologist testified on that. She can speak to that better than I can. We are not, there has been the arguments that were made that, "Oh, New Hampshire's not like any other state." And that's actually not true. And she spoke to that. And I can give you her testimony better. Everybody's different. There are differences. But, you know, our hydrogeology is very similar to, it's got similar to Maine. It has similar to Vermont. So, and there's some pieces of it that are similar to Massachusetts. Massachusetts has such... So, um, and there's some pieces of it that are similar to Massachusetts. Massachusetts has such a vast amount more. Um, property than we do, and it would be great if they didn't have a ban in place. Because they could do a public-private landfill and take care of their own trash and it'd be wonderful.
Any other questions? Thank you, Representative Patenza. Appreciate you introducing this bill. I am calling John Swan from Safe Forest Lake up in Dalton. And you've requested three minutes. We, no, no, sorry. I was reminded after our last um, uh, hearing, similar hearing. That placards like that were not allowed in the committee room. So.
Well, apologies, apologies by broken rules.
No, no. Rules I wasn't aware of, so.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Uh, my name is John Swan. I live in Dalton, New Hampshire. I'm the founder of Safe Forest Lake. And um. Uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide my import and support of House Bill seven oh seven. Requiring the Department of Environmental Services to establish a site-specific setback distance. For proposed new landfills. Um, as a precursor to my testimony. And in order to not get sued a third time by Casella Waste Systems, I need you to understand that all this is my opinion. Based on my research and experience. Um. I would urge the committee to support House Bill sev- seven oh seven. And I'm here to, uh, part of my testimony was my, uh, my placard. Uh, detailing a real-world example for the committee of what a poorly cited. Landfill looks like that has gone bad. And that would be the NCS landfill in Bethlehem. Um. It was, it was a, it, it, in nineteen, I have the, in in the documentation I provided to the committee, I did send via email. On page, on page three of my testimony, there is a, uh, a re- uh, hydro report from nineteen eighty-four, I believe. Regarding the Sanco landfill where the NCS landfill is now cited. Um, and that site, it says in the first paragraph. Um, Harold Brown, um, was a former owner in nineteen seventy-six. The site was formerly a borrow pit. So. There's that. And then also, um. Uh, there's another, um, on page, the next page, there's a, uh, report from GZA. Um, and second paragraph, the site lies within a portion of a northerly draining. Three hundred fifty acre watershed, which is part of the larger Ammonucic River watershed. So, and then it goes down to say that the site is located approximately four hundred feet northeast of the northeast corner of the site. Um, so basically, that's an example of of why we need. This, this bill to pass because we, we could, we have an opportunity present, prevent the mistakes of the past and. Um, most of the documentation I did send the committee. Um, details the ongoing and widespread. Um, site contamination at the NCS facility uh in Bethlehem. Um, and I did, and this is kind of, I'm I'm going a little off topic here, off track, but Representative Howard asked the question. Um, previously, would, would it make it to water? And what I've provided to you and what my, my map showed, a site map, which is from, uh, the July twenty twenty-four. Uh, groundwater um monitoring report provided to DES, um. It already is in Bethlehem reaching the water. I've provided test results, my own testing. Um, from October twentieth, twenty twenty-three, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, subsequent testing two weeks later of the second SEEP further down, uh, downstream of the, uh, at the NCS site. On June twenty-seventh, then on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and all four of those tests that I conducted of the SEEP runoff, which. This is a picture of what it looks like. In case you've not seen the video, I did send video link. Um, to, to my, uh, um, sampling, so you could see the force of the water that's coming off of that property. Into the Ammonucic River. And my lab reports showed consistent levels of contamination. With the further upgrading um monitoring wells, particularly the B three oh four well couplet. And the, um, actually, there's a new well, uh, B, uh, nine thirty-two. That is closer to the Ammonucic River, part of the SSI investigation uh of the property. And that has also shown the same um for, at least for PFOS compounds. But I will say that, uh, part of the placard that I had was part of a mock-up I did. Using the July twenty twenty-four monitoring um results, uh, submitted to DES. Showing a seventy-eight percent increase in total PFOS levels from prior testing with seven wells. Showing new first-time initial PFOS detections at that facility. As well as seventeen, and now I correct that because there's a new well that was installed in November that is also in your packet. Eighteen wells at that property with um PFOA detections. And I don't know if you're familiar with PFOA. But that is one of the two PFOS compounds that the EPA just deemed as a hazardous uh substance in, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, so this facility has a serious PFOA problem. And I guess really, again, I'm not gonna read my testimony to you, but I would ask, I did have a question for the committee. And perhaps you can even ask this of the department, but are you okay? Knowing that an existing operational landfill is allowed to continue to operate. While its own groundwater monitoring reports have consistently shown widespread and ongoing. PFOS contamination of the surrounding property, including the watershed of the Ammonucic River. As well as the surface water runoff discharge that I have tested. I provided you with the lab results. I've shown, I've provided you with links to the video, but are you okay with that? Continuing today. So with that, I'll, uh. Take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming this afternoon. Uh, I'd like to call Wayne Morrison. North Country ABC, and you've requested four minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for, uh, hearing my testimony. For the record, my name is Wayne Morrison and I am president of a grassroots organization called. Uh, North Country Alliance for Balanced Change. Six years ago, um. When the GSL project was at its infancy and we've heard about it, that event changed my life. I and members of my group have spent the last six years educating ourselves and trying to understand. What the rules are, how they apply, what they mean. And that led to, you know, I'm a homeowner, I'm not a hydrogeologist. But over the last six years, I've hired a hydrogeologist. I've hired a lawyer. I've hired a wetlands expert. I've invested my time and my energy to try and defend what I think is, you know. The best interest, not only of my own property, but my neighbors and ultimately the people of New Hampshire. I've come to realize that citing a landfill is probably the single most important decision in in that project's life. There's a ton of engineering and there's a lot of complexity in the engineering part of the landfill, and you'll hear a lot about double liners and monitoring wells. But where you put one of these ultimately dictates the risk that you're putting people in New Hampshire under. And that risk is not for a week or a month or a year, or even the life of the permit, which is, say, twenty years. It's at risk for the next hundred years because even af- after the landfill closes, the risks continue. The old rules when we started said that. You could cite a landfill within two hundred feet of water's edge. When I first heard that. Just a, a nobody dumb person living on a, a beautiful lake up north, I said, that can't be. Two-thirds of a football field is not, is not the protection I'm looking for and not just from my site, but anywhere. After a number of iterations, conversations, a year of rules being reviewed, feedback being given. That rule today is five hundred feet. And that's if the river is big enough. I guess if it's a smaller river, it's still two hundred feet. As Governor Ayotte said when she came and visited Forest Lake, she said, this makes no sense. That comment resonates with me because I think it makes no sense. Two hundred feet or five hundred feet, it's hard to argue that five hundred feet is more than two hundred feet, but both of those numbers in reality are meaningless. The reason that we need site-specific, science-based setbacks are because the geology. The hydrogeology of every site is different. And we don't know if five hundred feet is sufficient. And we won't know unless we test the soil. And this whole time of travel. Is an interesting concept. What we want is a margin of error. We want enough, we want enough time if there's an accident and. I think DES are good people trying to do the right thing. This is not me shooting. Uh, bullets at, they put a year into trying to update the rules. It's a lot of hard work and nobody likes your work when you're done. I get all of that. But I think the most important element of all the rules that we talk about is the sighting piece and and how far. You, you put the landfill facility away from, whether it's my lake, a river, the Atlantic Ocean. Or a drinking water supply is critical. I think this is a common sense approach to use science to determine that. I think the simple concept is that. The more porous the soil, the further back from water you should be. That's not that complicated. You don't have to be a hydrogeologist to recognize. That despite our best efforts, despite double liners and monitoring wells and and highly engineered systems. At the end of the day, unfortunately, shit happens. People make mistakes. Liners fail. Things break. I, I think at some level, what we're asking the committee is to recognize. That risk. And that how our lakes and our rivers and our water bodies and our drinking supplies are irreplaceable. They are the engine that's driving our economic boom in the North Country. They're critical to our long-term health and our long-term success. When we talk about this sighting criteria. Five years versus five hundred feet. Five hundred feet is an arbitrary number. We might debate forever the mechanics of how you come up with, is it ten to the minus five, is it ten to the minus four? But coming up with a distance that allows us enough time to first detect. Intercept and remediate a problem before it hits the water is what we're talking about. And why wouldn't we err on the side of caution? I think we should continue to drive for all the best practices in the design of the landfill. But at the end of the day, I would ask this committee, as I would ask anybody I speak to about this, this subject. We should assume at some point the landfill is going to fail. And when it does, the only thing protecting us is that sighting criteria that sets it back far enough. To prevent the problem from becoming irreversible. When Leachade hits a, hits a lake, there is no remediation. There's no fixing that. It's over. I don't know how many more landfills we're gonna need in New Hampshire. Right now, I don't think we need one at all, but if we do down the road, we should be very cautious about where we put it. That is the most important thing we can decide. And I think what Jalcar, I walked away disappointed that the rules weren't to my liking. They weren't strong as, as I would like them. But what resonated with me that this is a policy decision. DES has a lot of great people. They're in the fray every day. But somewhere along the line, the legislature has to weigh in and say, you know what? It is our view that we need to be extremely cautious. We need to err on the side of, if there's a failure, do we have enough separation between that site and a water supply? That's all we're asking. This is, you can make this extremely complicated. There's a lot of math. There's a lot of science. At the end of the day, when I stand on my dock and I look across and I say. A huge landfill is gonna be within sight, within less than a half a mile from my lake. I just can't believe that's, that's the best practice. That's the best that New Hampshire can offer its citizens. It makes no sense. And as Governor, Governor Ayotte said, you know. It, it, it's an important time for us, right? The, the fact that it makes no sense coincides with. We have ignored this issue for the better part of the last twenty years. The good news is we haven't had a new landfill. Nobody can remember when we had, had a new landfill. It's all been expansions. It's all been town dumps that have been bought and expanded. We need a place to start and the time to start is now. And I, I, I think, before we get lost in the minutia of who shot who and how, and and what, what are all the individual, how do you do this and how do you do that? There's people that can figure that out. But the policy part, the part that really matters is the legislators standing up and saying. We need to do better. We need to be more protective. And the time to do that is now. And I'm here to say, I support this bill. There may be warts and pimples on it. Maybe there needs to be some amendments. But the heart of this bill is the right thing for New Hampshire and now's the right time to implement it. And I, I urge you. To work through this and get this legislation through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Morrison. Amy Manzelli? Yeah. I hope you're not gonna read all this.
No. I hope you all do.
And, uh, I, I wanna just be cognizant of the time, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Uh, my name is Amy Manzelli from BCM Environmental and Landlaw, where I am a lawyer. And I'm here representing North Country Alliance for Balanced Change as their counsel. Uh, in strong support of House Bill seven oh seven. And I primarily wanna talk with you about how this bill brings a modern scientific approach. To citing landfills. So I'm basically just gonna give you an orientation. To the materials that I've submitted. Um, I did bring one hard copy. This, this is just one copy. Um, I'm sort of, uh, doing what Representative Patenza threatened to do, which is. Providing all of the voluminous science in support of HB seven oh seven. Um. And I'm not gonna read it. We're just gonna hit the highlights. Before I do that, though, I wanna provide further answer to the question about. Why do we need a site-specific setback when New Hampshire has a double liner requirement? So, um, what happened at NCES, the landfill that's operated in Bethlehem?
May, may I stop you a minute?
Yep.
That, that actually wasn't my comment or question. Um, I, I questioned the, um. Minus five number with regard to comparison with other states that don't. Have a double liner requirement. So their, their set, not, not setback, but their. Travel time.
Mm-hmm.
Is a lot more stringent because they don't have a double liner requirement. That's what I was, um, referring to.
Yep, no, I, I understand and thank you for the clarification, Chair. Um, but I did wanna explain the nature of the liner failure. Uh, because that is part of the answer. It doesn't matter how many liners you have, whether it's one or a double or perhaps more than that. Um, not only do they fail in and of themselves, there's also operator error. And that's what happened at NCES. So, um, over eleven years ago. Uh, Casella, the operating, the parent company there was having monitoring wells installed. And their contractors drilled holes right through an overliner. And it took 10 years for anyone to figure it out. And so last year, they reported 10 years' worth of a leak. And that is not uncommon in landfill operation situations. So when we're here talking about the need for a five-year setback, that's a real world example why. And there's another component of why we need a time-based setback, even if there's a double liner requirement. And that's because most of the leachate handling operations at a solid waste facility are completely separate from the area where there's a liner. So the liner is where, you know, the big hole is, right? There's the big hole where you put the trash. That's where the single or double liner is. And then there are other parts of the facility where the leachate tank, tanker truck is getting filled up and driving out. There's no liner under that area. So if there's a leak there, there's no double or single liner protection. So just wanted to add those clarifications. All right. So what we're endeavoring to do with this very voluminous package, which you all have in your email, is we want to give you everything you need to support and understand what's going on with HB 707 so that you will vote OTP, which is what we are strongly urging you to do. We know this is the first time this committee is considering this particular bill. So as I said, I'm just gonna kind of give you a walkthrough here, not a deep dive. Everybody else has talked about the process as to how we got here, but in some, you know, what we heard from both the department and Jelcar is these are policy changes that the legislature has to make. So here we are. We talk about the North Country Alliance for Balance Change team. And so these resources include input from our hydrogeologist, Muriel Robinett, our civil engineer, Honor Bonde, as well as myself and the NCBA C team, which is comprised of their board and members. And as, as Mr. Morrison said, we have been at this for a number of years and have by virtue of that gotten pretty well-versed in these issues. So there's an Exhibit A. And what that does is it compares what were the prior rules which, with what are the current rules. And it breaks it down with red, green and yellow. You'll see that as your first exhibit. Red is where the rule got weaker. Green is where the rule got stronger. Yellow is where the change was essentially neutral. And we've provided some analysis that explains what the nature of the technical change was. And all that analysis comes from our hydrogeologist and our civil engineer. The next thing, which is the bulk, it's about 350 pages. It's Exhibit B. And what that is, is study after study after study of peer-reviewed science that supports that something in the range of a 10 to the negative four or 10 to the negative five is the modern gold standard for landfill sighting setback hydraulic conductivity. Mr. Morrison said it just as plain English as you can get. You know, if you're gonna have leachate leaking through sand versus leachate leaking through clay, clay is obviously better. That's how a non-scientist would talk about it, but we are giving you the peer-reviewed science so you yourselves can become familiar with this. And then the last thing is the multi-state survey. So we've actually provided you with the citing requirements, the New Hampshire law, and then Maine, Vermont, Massachusetts and Rhode Island analogues of those citing requirements. So instead of just sort of, I mean, it's important to make the statement that New Hampshire's laws are the weakest in the region and beyond. But I wanted you as the committee to have those resources right at your fingertips. So if you want to look up any of those laws in any of our other regions, you can. Again, being mindful of the time, I don't have anything further to add except to say North Country Alliance for Balance Change wants to be a resource for this committee. Should you have any questions right this second, I would be very eager to answer them. And should you have any requests or any further resources, we would be happy to provide those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very, very much for your testimony, Representative King, then Representative Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for taking questions. How much participation did NCABC have in the crafting of this bill?
Actually, I personally had none. And I don't know the answer to that. Please hold.
Tom, are you testifying? Okay. Or Wayne, could you answer?
And I can reiterate, or we, Madam Chair, may he join me?
He may join you.
Thank you.
Please be brief.
The, the answer to your question is, we, we've had some, some involvement in the bill. And it's, that bill, it's, it's, it's been in multiple iterations. So over, over time, the bill has matured. We've learned more. So there's been, there's been a number of different people involved in writing the bill and it's been written primarily by scientists. So we, we've had layman's involvement, but it came from the science community. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam, for taking my question. I guess I'm wondering, do you and others feel like the common sense approach that you tried to bring to the rules process, do you feel like you were listened to respectfully throughout that process? Do people in the North Country Alliance for Balance Change feel like they were respectfully listened to and their concerns were heard when they tried to bring that to the process?
I think those are two different questions. There's certainly has been a lot of process. And there has been a high amount of decorum and respect in the process. But meaningfully heard? No. I don't think that we have been meaningfully heard. But I do think that the reason provided being that mostly these are policy-level changes for the legislature to make, I buy that reason.
Representative Germana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for taking my question. So as you know, one of the changes to the rules late in the game, after a lot, after all of the hearings and public input, was to say that if a site was below a certain standard, you could bring in 24, up to 24 inches of material. So I, I'm wondering if you could comment on that. I mean, does that mean that effectively you could cite a landfill anywhere in the state?
Yes, it does. I believe that that is a loophole so big you could drive a Mack truck through it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very, very much for, for providing us with a lot of research and information that, you know, we can certainly endeavor to dig through.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In lieu of ambiene, no problem.
Appreciate all of your, your testimony and information as well. And if we do have questions, we will be asking them. Dr. Walter, you asked for two minutes. No, press the button there. There you go.
That button, okay. Um, yes, hello, I'm Cynthia Walter and I do have a doctorate in, in science. I am speaking, I'm from 22 West Concord Street, Dover. So I hadn't planned to speak today, but I, I didn't know this bill was being heard at this time. I have researched this issue and I have personal experience observing. I'm studying the science of water pollution, especially above ground and below ground for 35 years in Western Pennsylvania, where hydrology is complicated and there are numerous leaks from landfills and all coal mines and all those sorts of discharges that do make their way into, into the ground and then reappear in the surface water and in people's homes and in their well water. So I have seen firsthand how the traveling of water from one pollution source through the ground and back over into people's homes and into their mouths, causing kidney problems and all sorts of other issues. I've seen that happen firsthand. So I've also read the literature on landfill liner leakage. And it's, it's fascinating to see that as good as the newest liners are, very well-regarded, very well-published studies of stress simulations that are done in real, real structures of modern landfills show failure rates can occur in as soon as six years. So it happens very quickly. And just due to small, small fragmentary flaws or in the, in the placement of the landfill, liners and so forth. So the idea of landfills failing is absolutely so real. And the idea of people being impacted unknowingly by water that has seeped from one source above ground, through the ground, traveled and then appeared elsewhere below ground. Now, sorry, elsewhere into, into well waters and into surface waters. Without those people knowing that that water was contaminated is very real. The also, there's a problem with the, and I think it's terrific. I mean, there's so, so many good things that I'm seeing in this bill. For example, the importance of the leachate handling components being subject to the profile of the perimeter of the subject area for the hydrology testing. Those, I, I, again, I can show you the reports of polluted, not, not polluted, water that was problematic being transferred to treatment, whether it's the trucks or whether it's being holding tanks and then the, the leakage lines, the holding tanks degrade, whatever it is, that problem water, the leachate essentially in this case, leaks out, escapes on the surface or below the surface and there was nothing to, to know that it was being, being handled. So if you don't have that space and that time to catch those leaks and begin to treat them, if you don't have space or time, people will suffer. People will be poisoned. And the water supplies will be damaged irretrievably, irrevocably. Because once that water is in the ground and on the surface and it reappears, it's now in the sediment of the stream. It's now in the sediment of the lake. And you cannot clean sediments of lakes. You cannot clean sediments of rivers. It's a permanent part of that water supply forever. So we have to have this huge margin of error associated with the landfill itself and all the components of the landfill operations, including leachate handling. So I, I think this is terrific. The statistical methods that are mentioned as, as, as used by the EPA, again, standard gold, boy, talk about gold standards, guys. You've really hit the mark and, hit the mark here. So I, I'm just thrilled to see this bill show up and, and know that all that science is so real. And thank you so much for listening.
Appreciate it. Questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you very much for coming today. I have one more pink card. And I would invite Director Michael Wimsat from New Hampshire DES to come and speak on this bill. Good afternoon, Director.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Thanks for inviting me to speak. I, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is not taking a position on this bill. But as I have done with a number of other bills, we feel that it's important to identify any observations or concerns that we think would be of interest to the committee as they, as they consider the bill. And that's what I'm, what I'm here to do. And then what I'll have is a handful of mixture of policy and technical issues that in our review of the bill, we've identified. So first off, regarding Section 3 of the bill that establishes the setback from, and I use the term potable water aquifer.
What, what line is that and what page?
Well, it's the whole section, but I can, let's see, page, page one.
Oh, line eight, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah. So that, that whole Section 3, it makes reference in, I think in the first paragraph to the location of the facility relative to a potable water aquifer. And this is really just a technical issue. Everybody has a different idea of what an aquifer is. For some people, an aquifer is the Oogalala aquifer out in the Midwest that provides, you know, covers several states and provides water to thousands of people. But the hydrogeologist's definition of an aquifer is very broad. And it basically means any formation, water-bearing formation that can provide water to a user. And that user could be an individual home well. And potable just means it's basically safe to drink. So almost any landfill site that, a new site, a greenfield's landfill sighting is likely to overlay something you could, with that definition, you could define as an aquifer. So just as you, in order for that section to be implementable, I think there would need to be a little bit of more exposition to explain or definition, a clearer definition of what it means. And to talk about the location of that site relative to a potable water aquifer. So again, that's really just a technical issue. Also, that same section makes existing facilities exempt from the requirements. And this is just, this is a general observation that the department has raised in the context of a number of bills. We've made, generally, we, there are times when I think it's appropriate to exempt an existing facility from a particular requirement, particularly when it's just impracticable to implement it. But where we're talking about potentially expanding existing facilities, it's not clear to the department why the members of a community where a facility exists deserve less, less protective conditions than the members of a community where a new facility is being proposed. So I'm not even sure where we would be on that, but I, I just wanna raise, I think it's a question that that is worthy of, of consideration when you, when you look at a bill like this. Also, on page 2, lines 1 through 5, it uses the term maximum seepage velocity. And in the context where it's used there, it's unclear whether that's a macro-scale evaluation of the site or a single location measurement. And if it's the latter, it seems that it could exclude virtually any site due to a relative, the presence of a relatively small area or volume of a particular soil type. So and that may not be, could be neither contiguous nor representative of the site and its ability to move water. So I just raised that I think that's again, a technical issue where I think perhaps that max, that term, the use of the term maximum seepage velocity probably needs to be looked at in terms of a clearer definition. And another technical issue on page, I think it's, would be page 2, lines 16 through 18. It uses the term fully permitted. And this is again, a technical issue because it's basically saying that expansions or, or landfills that are fully permitted are exempt. And the way that we, as I've said to this committee many times, we administer the solid waste program and particularly our landfill regulatory program through a system of permits. And we're all, you know, virtually any change you make or any new advancement at a landfill, there's a new permit modification that needs to happen. So it could be read that if, if the desire of the bill is to expand those facilities, a, an expansion that's been approved at a landfill is not really fully permitted until it's approved for construction and it's given operational approval. And that happens very late in the game. So I think it's just again, a language thing that maybe should be, should be looked at. Also, on page 2, line 19, uses the term, or the phrase perennial water bodies traversing a footprint. And it's not clear to me under what circumstances that would occur. This suggests that there's a perennial water body within the footprint of the landfill. And then talks about monitoring that would be required for that. And not clear that any, that circumstance would ever get a permit, so I'm not really sure. It make, it just makes me think maybe I don't understand what it's trying to accomplish, so I wanted to raise it. And then on page 2, lines 24 and going on, it describes, oh, again, it describes the conduct of subsurface investigations that, that look at superficial strati- that that look at superficial stratigraphy and bedrock. And then it makes the, it uses the phrase at least to a depth of nearby aquifers used. And that goes back to my comment before about really defining aquifer. I think the meaning here is if there's an off-site aquifer that is nearby that is used for drinking water. But it isn't really clear for that. It isn't, that that isn't clear in the language. So I think that's maybe a technical issue that should be should be should be looked at. And then on, and and the sponsor has acknowledged this, but I just do want to raise, page two, line thirty-five to page three of line three, it excludes from consideration any sites that are located within ten miles of a superfund site or ten miles of another landfill. And I'm not really sure why that is relevant. But even if it is, it'd be important to consider what that might mean. We have twenty-two superfund sites in New Hampshire and and a number of landfills, including, if you're talking about online landfills, there's three hundred of those. If you drew a ten-mile radius around every one of those facilities, I'm not sure any of the state would be left. So I want to just raise that as a consideration. And then I guess two other issues that I think the sponsor has acknowledged, but I just want to reiterate, on page fif, page three, fifteen, lines fifteen to seventeen regarding the Ford Act. We, this has been vetted thoroughly through the rulemaking process. We're confident that our rules invoke that and that it's already, it's a federal law. It applies anyways. And our rules were amended to make it clear that the applicant for a landfill needs to notify the FAA of their application and get a determination from them whether there are any Ford Act applicable and airports within a certain radius. So we're confident that that is appropriately addressed. And I don't think it's necessary in this bill. And then lastly, again, the sponsor acknowledged the page three, lines eighteen to thirty, which has a lot of language that would exclude anybody who who's committed any kind of violation of a state law, federal law, local law, permit, regulation from getting a permit. And, you know, we we administer a compliance assurance program. We're never out there as much as we'd like to be, but we're always trying to do more. And so we try to get to our facilities and do a thorough inspection. And there are a lot of requirements, and there's always going to be violations. And so if, as this is written, I don't think anybody that's ever operated a landfill in New Hampshire, even if they're doing a really good job, could get a permit the way that's written. So I know that the sponsors acknowledged a need to look at that. And and I would, I would echo that. And I'll, I'll leave it at that and answer any questions you might have.
Representative Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director, for taking my question. And this is a question about aquifers, which I don't pretend to understand in any great depth, pun intended. Last year, no laugh for that at all? Thank you, thank you. Last year, we passed a bill that went on to get signed by the governor and had to do with classifying landfills as projects of regional impact. And part of that bill, in my recollection, had to do with, it referred specifically to a table of identified aquifers because that was part of that legislation. So my question is, do we not have a a kind of a mapped-out system? Because I'm trying to remember what we referred to in that bill.
It was watersheds.
Watersheds, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's what I was trying desperately to remember. Thank you.
Representative Bixby.
So it sounds like, and and the prime sponsor acknowledged this, there is a certain amount of work to be done on the bill. And I don't think that, I think you've done a good job of identifying items of concern. I don't think that we could get very far by trying to, like, figure out the answers to all of those right here and now. But would you be available to work with a subcommittee to to put together an amendment for this or advise on an amendment?
We certainly assist the committee in whatever area you think would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much for your coming and pointing out some of the, perhaps deficiencies or points where we need refinement in this in this important bill. I would invite Representative Scully to please sit down. But if, on your way, grab the blue sheet for HB seven oh seven. And I would just like to say that the online portal reports two hundred and fifteen people in support of this bill, four in opposition. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve people in support of this legislation on the blue sheet and one person opposed. And if, what I'm going to do is close out the hearing for HB seven oh seven, I want to thank everybody who's come today to speak on this bill.